I'm out on a medical leave, but she will be attending remotely this evening and has asked me to run the committee of the whole. So with that, I'm committee of the whole. First of all, does anyone have anything for the good of the order? Okay, not seeing anything. All right, so review the regular meeting agenda. This was very late breaking, it's close to five o'clock this evening. We're going to move the municipal financial plan to meeting the whole for that report. We are going to move the discussion on accepting donations to the 1217 city council, as well as the community business number three discussion on remaining economic development by 1217. We have staff out six this evening, and so go ahead.
I forgot that one, if we could do the mayor and city council reports.
All right, we'll do, and we'll add mayor and city administrator reports to the cow, and we'll, you want to start with those?
I like that.
Okay. All right, and then if the consultant runs long, the reports should be on the main agenda, otherwise we'll give them sign early, and then we'll only have, looks like, one item of business for the remainder of our council meeting. So thank you all for bearing weapons, since there's been a lot of folks out in the holidays, having challenges, and I think we all know there's a lot of illness going around. So I hope everyone continues to stay healthy, to stay healthy, and those that are ill, recover quickly. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Catherine Metz, the project manager, and Ariel, is it Si?
Plus, it's Jay.
Hey, okay, I knew it was one of the two. And to discuss our municipal financial plan.
Hi, thank you for having us, and thank you, as you mentioned, illness going around, for rescheduling our presentation, because I was impacted by said illness, so appreciate your patience in having us back to present our final report. We have some slides, should I share those, or can someone share those?
We can share those.
Oh, great.
Sorry, one second.
Yeah, thank you.
Our point is not responding.
It's in the folder, isn't it, slide?
Yeah, that's true. There you go, so. But before it counts, that's here. Oh, yeah, that's, slideshow. Full screen, I have from beginning. And maybe this one. So from where they're, just minimize the window. Yeah, that turns through. And this one, and then share, and then.
Also.
There it goes.
Okay, perfect, should I advance these then, myself?
You can tell us next, and we'll move along.
Okay, okay, thank you, well, again, thank you for having us back to share our final report. Could you go to the next slide? Here's our agenda for this evening. We want to share a reminder of the project, brief overview, and then Ariel will share some information about the baseline financial forecast that we put together, and the city's anticipated investments. And then we'll share some general financial sustainability strategies, and some recommended strategies for the city to consider further. Next slide. This is a reminder of the overview of the project. The city desired a financial sustainability plan to ensure can maintain the high-quality services valued by the community, and also undertake several infrastructure initiatives. So our focus in this work was on the city's general fund. We identified budget trends, looking at historical data. We reviewed budget information and some fiscal strategies in peer cities, and then we developed a financial forecast for the general fund. And finally, we recommend some short-term and long-term financial strategies for both operating needs and capital improvements. Next, I'll hand it to Ariel to share the baseline financial forecast and anticipated investments.
Next slide, please.
Go to the next slide, thank you.
Thanks. So starting with the baseline financial forecast, we developed four forecast scenarios for the general fund for the period 2024 to 2031, to consider the impact of anticipated operating and capital investments on the city's budget. These scenarios were developed to build off of each other, with the first scenario illustrating the continuation of existing services with no new revenues, the second scenario forecasting the impact of four added staff positions with no new revenues, the third scenario considering the impact of adding new operating strategies, and the fourth scenario forecasting the impact of adding new operating and capital strategies on the general fund. I will walk through the first two scenarios and then pass it back to Catherine. Next slide, yeah, this one's good, thank you. So in this first scenario, which we call the status quo, we projected general fund revenues and expenditures, assuming no new revenue sources and no new expenses. This includes the property tax levy lift expiring at the end of 2025. And more details about the assumptions that we use to forecast revenues and expenditures are in appendix B of the report, which is pages 36 and 37. In scenario one, general fund expenditures are projected to exceed revenues in each year of the forecast period, as shown by the black dotted line. The general fund ending balance goes negative by 2029, which illustrates that new revenue sources are needed to maintain existing service levels. Next slide, please. And we can go to the next. In scenario two, we added salaries and benefits for the four positions shown here that have been budgeted in the general fund for the next biennium. Two of these positions are fully funded by the general fund, the community events coordinator and the police sergeant, while the finance manager and emergency management coordinator are partially funded by the general fund. Next slide, please. In this scenario, the annual budget deficit grows, and the general fund ending balance goes negative by 2028. Next slide, please. In addition to these operating investments that the city is planning for, we considered four capital projects that the city plans to undertake in the next few years. These are a new city hall, a public works maintenance yard, an expansion of Big Rock Ball Field, and reconstruction of Third Avenue. On the next slide, we show the cost estimates for each project, and Catherine will speak to recommended capital strategies to support these projects after a brief primer on financial sustainability strategies.
Next slide, please. And one more after that. Thank you, so before getting into specific strategies, we wanted to provide some general information about different approaches that cities can take to increase financial sustainability. One is to increase revenues to support ongoing costs and new investments. Another is to align expenditures with ongoing revenues by, for example, finding efficiencies or changing service levels. These two approaches can be done together. And then another is to consider how land use and economic development impact fiscal sustainability. A city can consider how different types of land use impact revenues and expenditures. For example, increasing business activity can contribute to revenues through additional sales tax, but additional businesses require additional services, which bring a cost. Next slide, please. So on this slide, we list the criteria that we use to evaluate potential strategies, equity, magnitude and growth, sustainability, alignment with priorities, feasibility and impact to other services. So for example, equity considers who would be impacted by the strategy, and alignment with priorities considers how the strategy supports the city's goals and community's priorities. Next slide, please. And one more. So here, I'll talk through three revenue strategies that we recommend the city consider further. These align well with the criteria shared on the slide before, so we chose to estimate the financial impact they would have on the general fund. We focus in our analysis on revenue strategies as the city has identified priority investments, and staff does not recommend reducing the budget at this time. These strategies do not all need to be implemented, or they could be implemented in different years. And in our enhanced revenue scenario, which I'll discuss in a moment, we do estimate the impact of all three strategies starting in the same year. So the first is a property tax levy lift. So as a primarily residential community, the property tax comprises the largest share of Duval's general fund revenue. This is an ongoing, stable source of revenue, despite the limit it had on its annual growth, and it's also flexible in its use. The city currently receives property tax from the levy lift, which expires in 2025. The other peer cities that we looked at do not currently have one. The city of Monroe had one on the ballot in November, but it did not pass. A second is a public safety sales tax. This is also an ongoing revenue source. And Duval's sales tax revenue has grown steadily for the past several years. This strategy would add a dedicated revenue source to fund the city's largest department, which is police. And the third is an increase in the transportation benefit district sales tax rate, which the city currently does assess at 0.2%. City has the ability to increase that to 0.3%. This would provide more revenue for street maintenance, for the street fund, which could allow the city to reduce the allocation of property tax to the street fund and use that revenue in the general fund. Next slide, please. So here, we discuss some potential strategies for the capital projects that Ariel described. For city hall, this is a very significant investment, so the city could begin setting aside funding to combine with future bond proceeds. It can also seek state or federal funding. For the public works maintenance yard, the city could use their excess reserves in some of the city's utility funds that could be used, and the general fund could contribute by renting space for the portion that would serve general fund functions. The city could also seek grant funding for this one as well. For the ball field expansion, the city could use bond proceeds and also pursue grant funding. And for the Third Avenue project, the city does have a plan to use a combination of impact fees, rate revenues, and other revenues, and the city could also seek federal funding for this project as well. Next slide, please. So in this scenario, scenario three, we call it enhanced revenue, so this includes the impact of the three revenue strategies that I discussed a minute ago. So we show the expenditures with the additional positions from scenario two and the three new revenue streams that would start in 2026. So general fund revenues are projected to exceed expenditures in each year of the forecast period. Next slide, please, excuse me. And the annual general fund ending balance exceeds the reserve target every year and actually does increase because of the annual budget surplus. Next slide, please. So this one, scenario four, we call enhanced revenue and capital funding. So this includes, builds on scenario three, and includes the impact of debt service for the Big Rock Ball Field project and a general fund contribution for the Public Works Maintenance Yard project, and we assume these costs would also be in 2026. In this scenario, expenditures are greater than revenues in each year, though the annual deficit declines over this period. Next slide, please. And here we see that the ending fund balance does decline over this period, but it exceeds the reserve target through 2030. Next slide, please. A few concluding thoughts. In our analysis, we find that the city will need new revenue to continue providing the high-quality services that residents value and desire. So the strategies that we looked at, the property tax levy lift, a public safety sales tax, and an increase in the TBD sales tax rate would support the addition of new positions and capital investments and ensure that the general fund ending fund balance remains positive through the forecast period. But increasing revenue for the city does have an impact on taxpayers, so if these were implemented, property tax bills would likely increase as would the cost of purchasing goods and services in Duval. We'll note that the current levy lift expires in 2025, and if anyone were approved in 2026, depending on the rate, the impact to property owners may not be large. So the city should engage with the community to talk about the city's needs and understand the community's willingness to support higher taxes and what kind of mix of new revenues would be supported. Over the long term, there are some strategies the city can consider, such as how it delivers services, or how it could control costs, for example, through process improvement efforts. The city can also consider how future land use decisions would impact the city's budget and increase the development in a way that supports financial sustainability and also aligns with the city's goals. Next slide. That's our presentation, thank you so much, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Councilmember Nethlin. Yeah, I heard you provided questions, but I was hoping would be provided, I asked if they provide, you provided the consultant orders and topics, so. Sure, they will provide it, or if we would go over the answers to those questions?
Let me double check, I believe this administrator was requesting that wait to hear the report before asking questions of the consultants and get the full report with the full of council. But I will go through my email and see what I can find, so please go ahead and proceed with your question. And just like normal council, we get two questions each and move on to the next person until we go around.
I went to a lot of work and read through the entire report ahead of time and prepared and questioned, and so I don't know if they're, okay, I guess. So the plan mentions cost efficiencies as a strategy to help close the deficit. Why was this strategy not explored, and how would you recommend our city pursue this strategy? And then I asked along that same lines, do you have experience with, and would you recommend the state auditor, Senator, Center for Government Innovation Lean Services program offered by them? So I'm just kind of curious that we've added a significant amount of employees in the last, I think we've gone from 40 employees to like 62 in a very short amount of time, and. So just streamlining and creating efficiencies seems like would be very, you know, right for that. And so I'm just curious if there's any intention to explore that before going to the taxpayers and asking for money?
Sure, yes, so regarding the state auditors program, I don't have personal experience with that. I do have experience working on lean efforts in a city government, and it's valuable, it takes time and effort and expertise, it's worth doing. There's a lot of efficiencies, and, you know, we could call it little hanging fruit that I think governments can find, but I think it takes some training and knowing how to do that. So I would definitely recommend that as a strategy. I find that it doesn't result in a large magnitude of savings. Sometimes it's more how to bend the cost curve from increasing, how to kind of keep cost growth lower. Sometimes you have to invest a little bit, I think, to achieve that, like in hiring, you know, training, you know, to do a lean process, it's not obvious, I think it takes some good understanding of the concepts and the practices. So definitely, that is a strategy that the city could and should explore. I just think if we're looking in terms of magnitude, it's also another thing maybe we didn't include in the forecast, is it's a little difficult to estimate how much the city could save annually. I think there could be an amount that could be saved once those process improvements take hold and some efforts to streamline processes. It could, you know, avoid more, you know, for example, adding more positions, because you can do more with the same amount of staffing that you have.
Okay, thank you.
It's Councilmember Supple.
Yeah, the recommended capital strategies for the public works maintenance yard. I didn't understand the statement that the general fund can rent space to pay for its portion. What's, can you tell me more about that?
Sure, I can answer a little bit, and also, this is through, we learned something we talked through with public works director, so that he might be able to answer further. I think the public works maintenance yard would serve primarily utilities functions and also maybe 25% of general fund functions. So really, the space should be paid for by those funds in the right proportion, so that they don't, you know, the utilities don't subsidize the general fund function. So I think what, how it could work is say the utility funds had sufficient funding to make the investment, the general fund could help kind of pay back, or pay the utility funds for the amount of space that they're using, and help pay for the project in that way.
Also, the funds for the maintenance yard, a portion of that would come to the general fund for the use of the yard that they're.
Right.
Using. Okay.
Anyone else? Councilmember Supple? Or I'm sorry, Councilmember. It's been a lot before this.
Yeah, sort of a similar vein in terms of the question. I think you recommended sort of three specific strategies, one targeting sort of public safety, there was the transportation benefit district in terms of some of the Third Avenue projects, and then the broader sort of general property tax lift. I was curious, you know, if that was inclusive of everything you looked at, or that was sort of where you landed in terms of the final recommendations. There wasn't anything like specific to parks, like when we talked about, whether it's park benefit district or ballot levy specific to parks in addition to the one targeting public safety. I'm just curious, could you talk about your investigation analysis and sort of how you landed on those three versus the portfolio of options that you probably initially evaluated?
Yeah, regarding the property tax levy, I think it could be for specific services, like parks or parks and police. It could be more general, we didn't really go into that level of detail, but it could be designed in however way that you think would work well for Duval. We did look a little bit at a metro park district, which is also a property tax mechanism. I think, I think it's just the property tax levy lift provides a little more flexibility. That is, you know, you could collect a similar amount of revenue, you know, it's like the same mechanism, however, with the rate you would decide to try to pursue, it would just be specific to parks. So that would just be more limited in its use, and you couldn't use it for other city services. I think metro park, well, just when we're thinking about metro park districts is, there aren't, there weren't a lot in the peer cities that we looked at, there aren't a ton of them. Some of them are very specific, like for a specific service, like a pool. So I think that's sort of how they have been getting formed in recent years, like we need to redo our pool, or we need to redo our one facility, and that's sort of how a community decides to fund it. So I could talk a little bit more with the city administrator, we didn't really explore that concept quite as much, but if you'd like a little more information, we can put that together.
Yeah, and I think you sort of answered my general question, it's really if there was a trade-off for pros and cons, and it makes perfect sense if it's a rec center or a pool, it's a very targeted capital investment versus we do have the Big Rock Ball Field, but we have other park infrastructure managers working, and I think your response in terms of the flexibility that provides, I just want to make sure we haven't left anything on the table in terms of other options, thank you.
Yeah, I'll just note really quickly, in our report, we do briefly describe each of the options, like what they would entail, and if peer cities use them, and kind of about them a little bit. So if you wanted to, you know, explore them further, you know, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I did see the section of the municipal benefit district, example.
And Councilmember Shaeber.
Along the same lines, looking at your report, I would actually like to see some information on these other options. For example, increase impact fees for redevelopment. It's not clear to me exactly what options we have there, but I certainly would like to understand, you know, what is legally available and could potentially be used to offset the deficit. Same with the transportation benefit district fund. According to your notes, we could actually raise that from our current 0.2% to 0.3%. I'd like to see, I realize that's not a lot, but nonetheless, I'd like to see what, you know, what benefit that would bring. And I guess I'm probably out of questions, but still related to the same thing. The, it's my understanding, the property tax levy lift, property tax sharing, property tax, or, excuse me, not property tax, property, what do you call property, sales tax, TBD sales tax, you know that? And then the public safety sales tax would all require approval by voters, is that correct?
Correct.
Well, actually, the transportation benefit district does not require voter approval anymore to increase it. That's a council decision, a council can have any time. And the legislature just recently changed that within the last year, year and a half, so that's still pretty new.
Okay, yeah, I think it's important, yeah, we see what benefits we can get from that. It's, you know, I certainly don't want, don't want to, you know, pass anything over our constituents, but nonetheless, that's an easier thing to do quicker, since it just has to go through the council, so that's important for us to understand.
Director Lenishewski, and then we'll go to Councilwoman Kudbel, if she has questions.
Just, Councilwoman Shaeber's question on impact fees, they're not assessing the impact fees, we're having that done with another consultant, and just the impact fees can support capital operation, capital in that operation. So, okay, so we are looking at making sure the capital fund and the eligible projects through their impact fees are axed out. We've heard council one, they're three years, so we're still working on that. Do I do the rates through utilities, and then where are some going through the impact fees and general facilities charges for those? Okay, so that would impact Big Rock Park per se. Okay.
So you'll report out then on the general facility.
Yeah, you have more information coming through, Mark.
Right.
Not from this group.
Gotcha.
Just three quick questions on those.
Uh, just three quick questions on those other things for the council benefit. So the T B D, that is a ten year program, correct?
Yes, I I'd have to check the rules on how it can be renewed, I'm not, I don't recall, but it is.
Ten years and then the term length for the levy lift lift and then the public safety sales tax, are those term?
I think the, I don't think the public safety sales tax has a term, I can check that. The levy lift, you know, I think it's up to how it would be designed, I think the limitation is if it pays for debt service, it has a nine year limit. If it pays, if it doesn't, I think it's just it can be designed as a one year or a one year permanent or like temporary, I think it's in how it's proposed, if I'm not, but I can check that.
And then to Mr. Shaefer's last question on the one percent public safety sales tax and or T B D, we do two tenths of a percent now, it brings about four thirty-five, so you're looking at about two hundred and ten thousand a year from one tenth of one percent from those different programs, each one was three million.
Okay. Not huge, but.
Yeah, and our sales tax is still lower than the Kirklands and Bellings overall, which are ten, we're at nine point oh.
They're even higher than some jurisdictions right now, and you got to eleven. Councilmember Koubal?
Um, I see you have a bond as a way to pay for the city hall, municipal campus. So that would be part of the debt that would be if we had the property tax, it would make it go nine years with debt service, correct?
Yeah, I'll check that for you to make sure that's correct, but yeah, I think I I think there's a limit on if it's if the levy lift is paid for debt service.
And then how does the bond work?
In general, how does it work?
Yeah.
Oh, um, so you, the city would decide that it needed an amount to pay for a capital investment and it could identify a source, you know, how it's going to pay the annual debt service and the term and I think then it would just go to, you'd have your financial advisor, you know, work to sell the bonds on the market and then you would get the revenue and pay for the project and then start paying the debt service.
Go through the bond rating process?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, Councilmember Nethlin, your next two?
Yeah, just, oh, I only did one the first time. Do I get two per turn?
That's, you asked two questions, they answered one, but yes, you get two per question, that's procedure.
So I get one question right now, I'm confused, you said two more.
You, council procedures are two questions per council member, you originally asked two questions or it's a two part question, just two questions. And so all the other councilors asked two questions and so now you have an opportunity to ask two per.
I don't think I asked two questions.
Councilmember Nethlin, let's face it, not you, but just come on.
Okay. Um, I just, I want to make a comment on a prior question. The trade off on a municipal park district that I see is primarily that we would be allowed a bigger tax base, so that's one of the reasons why Duval have been curious about municipal park district is because our parks, especially Big Rock Ballpark, McCormick Park, we really serve a much larger area than just within city limits and so it had been an idea that if you created this municipal park district, you could have a larger net of homes assessed values that could help contribute to those benefits because they are shared with the broader community outside of city limits, so ideas had been, you know, use the Duval Fire District boundaries, which is a much larger area, which would mean the cost per home would be significantly less to fund the same amount of service and so yes, if you just have a municipal park district be the exact same area of the city of Duval, there'd be no point, you just run a levy lift left or there would be absolutely no point doing. So the reason that we have been interested in municipal park district was specifically because you could cast that wider area and collect revenue from all of those who are using our services because city of Duval is the service provider for parks pretty much for this larger area around. So my next question was kind of more specific and if you look at maybe you can go to, I think it's page twenty-nine in the Sustainability Plan where it compares the levy rates. So I don't know if that's available to look at because that might help, but so when it compared the levy rate, how it was done is they included the city levy rate, the fire EMS levy rate and park district levy rates. But we don't have a park district, so that doesn't count, but what kind of became an apples to oranges situation is our fire district only collects the one percent cap because we use a fire benefit charge. And if you look at all of these other cities as comparables, they don't use a fire benefit charge. And so their levy rate for the fire represents all of their collection of taxes. Whereas in Duval, we traded off for that and we have a one percent cap on our regular fire levy and we are charged a fire benefit charge, which is not part of the levy rate, it's just an added charge onto our tax bill. So for example, from my home, the fire benefit charge is six hundred and eleven dollars. So that's an equivalent of adding an additional point seven three five four levy rate. So if you really wanted to do an apples to apples and include how much people are paying for fire in these comparable cities, you would really need to add in the levy equivalent to the fire benefit charge. And so that if you add in the levy equivalent of the fire benefit charge, our levy rate for city services would be closer to like two point six three, which is really at the very, very, very tippy top of any comparable city. So as we stand right now, if you did an apples to apples comparison, we are already at the very, very top of the levy rate, if you include the true fire collection. So I just wanted to, I think that's really important that when you look at our actual tax bill for those services, we are paying already, even without asking taxpayers for any more money, we're already at the very, very top of all of these comparables. So I just really, and the other thing that is, our city charges by high utility taxes and some of these other cities, you know, don't rely on utility taxes quite so much, so I think it would be interesting to see if you really look at our tax burden for residents, it's quite high, whereas in other cities like North Bend, for example, they have a V N O tax, they have two different kinds of V N O taxes, they have a regular V N O tax, it's like on grocery receipts or something, but they also have a square footage, you know, tax, which is a little more complicated, which is also the reason why they have a larger finance staff because it takes a lot of finance staff to run a V N O tax and I think that's another trade off that I would be concerned if we pursued that that we have such small you know, business revenue going on that it would it would cost more to run the program than you would ever benefit, so I just, I feel a little bit concerned that our citizens are already pretty tapped out if you do a comparison. So I don't know, I I do think that there should be a note in the report that acknowledges the fire benefit charge and what the levy rate equivalent is of that to have a more clear understanding of how our property tax collections compare to these other ones, so I, that's what I provided and why I didn't want to have to explain it in the beginning because it is somewhat technical and I I provided kind of some documentation to show how the fire benefit charge works. But I think that would be helpful if the report could reflect that. So I, hopefully my question could be forwarded on to the consultant. That would be helpful.
Do you have a second question?
Uh, my final question is about the recommended funding source for the bond reflet payment on Big Rock Ballpark and City Hall. Let's see, I'm here, my question again. Yeah, so the plan currently shows the deficit continuing to grow, I think, if we built Big Rock. But I didn't see any scenario because it was kind of beyond the forecast what it would do to our our deficit if we had to use general funds to pay for City Hall. Wasn't sure how big of a deficit that would be because I know a loan payment is enormous, so I I would think that it would create just an astronomical deficit.
Yeah, we didn't include that, I think because you're right, it is beyond, I mean, we would assume that would be on this timeframe that we're looking at, but yeah, I mean, if it's a forty million dollar project, that's a pretty significant annual payment, so you know, that's why we thought other strategies could, you know, support that, so it's not, that's not the only funding source for that project, you know. The city administrator mentioned potentially state or federal funds to support that. You know, some cities, if they have a big investment that they know is coming, they might set aside, you know, start setting aside money in a, in a like a capital fund or some somewhere, year re or so, you know, you can start to accumulate some to help offset that.
Do you have an idea of what funding we could use to set aside?
I mean, if like you had perhaps, I mean, I can just speak to the example of a city I worked in where you know, they foresaw needing to replace their enterprise system, like their financial system, that was just going to be quite significant, so in the annual capital, annual capital improvement or the seven year plan, excuse me, C I P, they would say a million dollars every year and it would probably, I'm not sure exactly the, you know, the accounting mechanics of where that how that was accounted for, but they'd say we want to start budgeting for this every year and a, you know, a smaller amount to try to accumulate some funds for that.
Councilmember Mercer and then Councilwoman Shaefer.
So, you know, again, kind of similar vein, I think, you know, acknowledging the comments from Councilmember Nethlin in terms of the levy rates, I think one thing that's a little hard or doesn't come through in this report, we see different analysis from different consultants, but you know, when we did the Parks Trails and Open Space Report, we obviously, there was an analysis in terms of the number of parks per citizen. We have a lot of sunk costs or sort of fixed maintenance that you don't get the economies of scale in a smaller municipality versus the bigger and some of the comparables you had, well, obviously Body Lake and Monroe also have different economic base in terms of the businesses that they generate sales tax from, car dealerships, large scale strip malls, things of that sort, which we simply don't benefit. I, I think one thing that I struggled a little bit is like even if in in terms of looking at the reputation, the levy rates, it's like the reality is it may actually be much higher, we may be at the top of the scale, but we're also trying to to fund a best baseline of all services based on the city or size that's going to have a fixed cost regardless. And I, that's not necessarily called out, it's sort of an assumption a little bit in the report, but just from your analysis, you've obviously looked at other cities, I was curious if you could just sort of talk about that a little bit and frame that in terms of from a council perspective, how we should be thinking of sort of the baseline or the foundational in terms of that from a revenue generation. We obviously can cut expenditures, but then there's your, obviously you run the risk of dropping below baseline of those services or having to cut staff drastically to to sort of maintain a sort of a balanced budget.
Yeah, I think you're right, like a smaller city like Duval, you know, there is sort of depending on the level of service you want, I mean, what you say makes sense, like a larger city could achieve some economies of scale, like you'll need a certain number of park maintenance staff or you need certain police staffing to provide twenty-four seven service, for example. In regards to the peer cities, I think we included in this report, I can check, we recently did some work with the city of Briar, which is also, is just smaller, but also very residential and, you know, they would likely pursue similar strategies, which would be a levy lift, you know, which is you know, also their largest revenue source. You know, we've also worked with the town of Woodway, which is much, much smaller and also in St. Homage County and you just recently approved levy lift. I'm not advocating for this necessarily, I'm just saying this is sort of the experience of other small cities. You know, I, I get the sense that the, you know, on the cost side, that the cities trying to fund what it services that the community values and at the right level, you know, there was a staffing analysis done separately by separate firm that identified some needs to address perhaps overloaded functions or to try to, you know, beef up functions, I think that there's some need there. Like, you know, that's sort of contributing to why we looked more on the revenue side is kind of acknowledging that the city has, there's some other analysis that would suggest these are some needs, I mean, to maintain the level of service that you that you want. I don't know if I'm answering your question, but.
Yeah, I think it was sort of just acknowledging some of the realities, I mean, you touched on this or there's a limited number of options we have and and obviously some of these, when you have a larger population and you divide the levy or the tax impact across multiple citizens, you can generate, you know, a larger pool of revenue at essentially a lower cost per citizen, when you're a smaller city with fewer citizens and you have sort of targets around revenue or expenditures, there's a limited sort of way that you can slice the pie. And so I guess I was kind of looking, you you did address it, I think it's a hard conversation, I mean, this, every time we have this discussion sort of circles back around, there's a limited number of options as an island city that you can sort of push and pull from, there are discretionary decisions we can make that would cut services or we can, you know, go to the the residents and and sort of try to tell the story about why they would want to fund those, at the end of the day, there's there's decisions that they'll need to make as a community in terms of what that baseline of all services, but I I think you did address my question, I just basically wanted to articulate that one point for the you know, council is that there is a more challenging environment that we operate at versus some other facilities, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Uh, Councilwoman Shaefer.
Okay, thanks. This is more of a statement than any question, but you know, a reality check for us on the council, we go, we go to our residents and ask for, well, we need a property tax increase, we need a sales tax increase. Oh, and by the way, we need a bond as well. You can imagine what what their reactions can be and and rightly so. So, so let's keep that in mind as we move forward on this and even though it may not be a significant source of funds, first and foremost, let's pursue funding sources, revenue sources that do not inadvertently impact our own residents, impact fees is one example of those. There may be others, I don't know, but but certainly that should be our highest priority.
Thank you, Councilwoman Shaefer. We have Councilmember Supple.
Yeah, I think in your, in your full report, you mentioned you briefly talked about annexation and the possibility of that increasing revenue. Yeah, could you explain a little bit more about that?
Uh, sure, you know, that's something the cities are looking at. Just in general, I guess, what's the strategy around annexation and they're kind of curious about the the financial impact. When you annex the area, you get the revenue that's generated through property tax or a per capita state revenue and and you know, the sales tax and things like that. You also have to provide services to the new area. So, you know, we've done some work for cities. Often the resident, like very residential areas, it doesn't always pencil out to be a positive impact because I mean, we're making, you know, assumptions about what it would cost to provide service to people and as a city does get larger, as we just talked about, you could probably find efficiencies, it's not like it might not cost, you know, exactly the same to, you know, per person, you could probably find efficiencies there. But, and it kind of depends, I think, on if the area is likely to grow or develop, you know, there'd be some benefit from. But, and it kind of depends, I think, on if the area is likely to grow or develop, you know, there'd be some benefit from. The sales tax on a new construction, for example, or the type of. Use, if it's commercial, you know, that could generate different types of revenues, um. So I think a lot, you know, I think cities don't necessarily look to it as a strategy to. Become financially sustainable, I think it could be, I think it's just part of the thinking about, you know, if annexation is the right thing. To do for a city, um, so I think there's, if there were an area that. Duval was interested in, you know, you could look at what it looks like now in terms of assessed value, um, population. What it is likely to look like in the future, is it likely to grow or? And how, what kind of revenue it might generate and what it might cost to serve the area, depending on who, you know, how many people are there, for example. Um, Ariel, I don't know if you'd add anything, we're, we're also working together on some similar work on annexation.
I don't have anything to add.
So, um, Councilmember, before I go back to Councilmember, that might be doing something else. Councilmember Nethlin?
I I, did you say you're working on something regarding annexation?
Um, we're working with um a couple of cities on a a look at annexation and the potential. Uh, financial impacts.
So, uh, maybe, I don't know who we hired to do it, but we had done that for the um. The North UGA, we had done a financial analysis, and I don't know who ended up, uh. I think, um, if you might remember that, we did a financial, and it, I believe the outcome of that analysis was that it was a net drain in the end. Of annexing, do you remember who did that?
I think that it was actually Burke that did that. The developer, um, but it was done so long ago that I wouldn't necessarily use that data. And I know that quite a few communities are honestly looking towards or is or groups like. Um, Burke and Associates to look at annexations to see what that benefit and cost is. Which we're required to do anyway as part of any annexation.
Yeah, but I think I remember it ended up being kind of a drain in the end of when we looked at that report.
I think that it, and Catherine said this, when something is mostly residential, that is unusual. And that's why many communities are starting to look at. Other things that they can incorporate into annexations, like mixed-use, commercial, those other pieces. Where it's not just residential taxes you're getting out of it, but you're also looking towards. Property taxes and sales taxes coming out of those new areas if they're annexed.
Um, Director Lenashewski.
Do you recall the timing of that, and this is also for for you folks. The last time I was looked at, I think it was prior to destination-based sales tax.
Oh, okay.
So, we're not a heavy commercial user, however. I assure you, when you look at how deliveries are made to houses via Amazon and other non-brick-and-mortars. So, it's like that sales tax revenue over the last five years has taken a different trajectory than it did the prior five or ten. So that was something that I would imagine is going to come up in any annexation review on those revenues, uh, relative.
Yeah, that would make sense, yeah.
And the the legislators likely to also be looking at a delivery uh tax, uh, as well as. Uh, this legislative session to mitigate some of the impacts of all of the delivery, um, and that could add on to the sales tax as well, depending on how it's formulated. Uh, Councilmember Shaper.
Yeah, regarding annexation, uh, I, you know, I I think. At best, any residential annexation would be a wash, although likely a net negative uh on on the city. Uh, certainly, there's, you know, there's a short-term uh income from the development itself. But in the longer term, we have to provide the same citizen, same services to those new residents that we do now. And certainly, you know, ask ourselves a question, we've seen significant growth here in the past six, seven years, right in Duval. Without annexation, has that made our revenue better? And I think the answer is no, it it hasn't, uh, it it is not clear to this furthest, but it certainly hasn't helped us. And in fact, I think it would be hard for us to find any city where residential annexation has made their uh revenues better. Uh, regarding commercial annexation, uh, we've had this discussion so many times here in Duval, we have commercial land available right now. That's not the, no one's interested, yeah, uh, so annexing more commercial property is not going to help us. Uh, at least at this uh, at at this time, so I don't see that annexation, either residential or commercial. Will provide any help for our revenue situation.
Great, um, Councilmember Nethlin, and then we'll go one more round and then um we'll get to reports.
This is super quick, but um, when you were calculating and kind of working into your uh projections that. The additional um and the public safety sales tax. Did you, for those projections, did you base that on current sales tax revenue? And then projecting forward that that would grow?
Uh, yes, and Ariel, you can correct me, but we did look at historic sales tax revenue and what we're projecting forward and. Assume uh a percentage, you know, to add a point one percent on that.
So I, the reason I was concerned about that is because um we have a huge um. Jump in sales tax related to the residential development that's going on right now that. Should be starting, you know, we probably have another couple of years of that, but then our um total sales tax. Um, which, or it it should drop significantly once that construction sales tax and kind of the related sales tax. Um, even not within the construction and sales tax category, um, that will probably um go back down. So anyway, I don't know if that's reflected, but I do think that that's an important thing to consider, that that sales tax revenue very likely will. Um, be impacted once um the residential home building kind of slows.
Okay, I can check that if we are using the sales tax without uh construction to make sure.
Yeah, because currently the TBD uh revenue includes all sales tax, not. We don't separate out construction, sales tax, we're looking at the TBD.
Um, Councilmember Supple?
Yeah, did I understand correctly that an increase in sales tax requires a vote?
Depends on which of the sales tax, so the TBD, you have council manic authority, um. Public safety and any other sales tax requires a vote of people at this stage, unless there are changes in legislature.
Does anybody under, know why the public sales, public safety tax, I mean, Monroeville? Have any surveys done on that?
Uh, Director Thomas.
I can't speak to it too personally, but I live in the city of Monroe, I think there is one tax fatigue. Two, Snohomish County also had a public safety tax on their school districts, had, you know, not safety taxes, but taxes up. And so they just couldn't make a run of it, and it was public safety and parks, which is similar to the one that we have. But they didn't, they didn't budget for it, and they'll have to decide if they're going back out. Um, it did overwhelmingly go down, by the way, so it wasn't even really a close vote. And it really is the first time, you know, that the city has experienced a lost vote, if you want to call it that. So, it's about timing as well, right, and it's hard to put up taxes. Honestly, in a presidential year, those are generally the times you don't want to, that is statistically, when most tax sales is in a presidential year.
And I would also add that a lot um has to do with how effectively um communication with the community happens. Um, because if you communicate effectively and transparently. Um, and show what the money is actually going for overwhelmingly, they will pass, but in a larger city like Monroe, it's a lot more difficult to get those. Um, to get those messages across, Director Lenashewski.
Was that a new or a renewal?
It was a new, so it wasn't a renewal, they do have a public safety tax and a TBD. So they do have both of those, and I would say that the pro uh. Campaign felt weak, in my opinion, knowing kind of more what I do because I work in this realm. I mean, they did have signs out and they did a really nice mailer, but I think it was too late, because it didn't come out until pretty late. So I think going to what uh Mayor said is that it really is about early and often communication and having. The, you know, the two teams, pro and con, go there and do that, do that work.
And and the jurisdiction, providing enough information before it even gets voted on, put in the ballot to make sure that the community is aware of the discussion and can provide their feedback as well. Uh, any other questions?
I wish, I just wanted to really quickly, if it's okay, just kind of address the commercial kind of comment on the annexation. And just in general, in a a commercial land we have, I do want to remind us. That a lot of our commercial land, especially at Big Rock Road, has use restrictions and has for twenty years. And so that is a contributing factor to why they have not developed out in general. And then we just have a lot of constraints on Main Street to slopes, it's not because somebody doesn't want to come, it's because they can't pencil it out.
Thank you, well, thank you Catherine and Ariel so very much for all of your hard work and and pulling this plan together, it's not an easy task. Especially with every city being slightly different, uh, but our statutory requirements being the same. So, uh, very much appreciate um this excellent work, uh, look forward to seeing. How we implement it in the future, so thank you both, and have a wonderful evening.
Yeah, thank you both, thank you all.
Uh, so we'll move on to uh Mayor and City Administrator and Council Reports, mine will be pretty short. Uh, Sound Safety Association has the annual meeting tomorrow evening, um. At, uh, I believe seven P M in Ritten, I don't know if anyone's planning on attending. Um, I probably will not be able to attend, uh, since my son had emergency surgery on Sunday. But, uh, hopefully somebody from New York will go and represent and vote for um for the annual budget this year. Um, and I'll go ahead and move on to uh City Administration Report, which will be provided by Director Thomas and Director Lenashewski.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council, and we're going to bring it up really quick and. Director Lenashewski at first for Public Works.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Council, you know, citizens in, uh, in this meeting, maybe online. T A B grant awards, if you haven't heard, there are this one piece, we were received the ends of two of our four grants. So, one was for the Big Rock Road overlay of the asphalt preservation section, you know, next slide, listen. To the tune of three hundred fifty-seven thousand, so we'll, we will put sixty-three thousand skin in the game to get that overlay done for a necessary four-twenty. Uh, next slide. The rapid flashing beacons was the other project selected, the third avenue intersection with, um, was it one sixty? Seventh by the backside of uh Cherry Valley Elementary. Two thousand five hundred from the state and then seven. This third avenue, the crosswalk that exists now, third avenue by Cherry Valley Elementary. Oh, okay, sorry, we're gonna wipe that and grade for it, yeah. Those, the second project that was awarded, next slide. Third Avenue project, concrete work is done, they'll be measuring up now for all the railing, because it's all custom length, they will be going dormant. As far as the contractors, so you won't see them, um, they're probably wrapped up this week and then be gone through winter. So, yeah, they'll be cutting and fabricating all the railing, they will have temporary safety down, so that should be open to foot traffic by the end of business Thursday. And then it is, you know, curb, gravel, curb gutter, um, and then the sidewalk will be all installed, they have the bronze imprinted fish. Inside their little design, uh, K P G, some ass provided, and that. Ask for the concrete treatment is is quite uh something to see, so that's all wrapping up, um. Yeah, although we left there's a railing and landscaping and after winter, uh, one forty-second is pending completion on the night. Uh, due weather pending for streets outstriking. Uh, we are meeting with P S E tomorrow to finalize the car charger station location program. For the city, um, they had a pretty good open submission window on through a map program, like where you would. See one or use ones, there's a lot of red dots over the place. Uh, working on recruiting our facility technician, which is new for twenty twenty-five, I think I've carried you through many things already. Obviously, the vehicle watering, do what we can to stay under budget and uh save even more money. And I did attend the Duval Historical Society's new book launch last night for their wonder of Duval uh new book, so the. Historical Society hosted a little event at the Grand, great, um. Illustrator there, Historical Society, and their work with their. Their publisher was, excuse me, was there as well as the writer, the writer, the book writer, the illustrator writer, a few other people. Uh, yeah, it was fun, uh, Charles Webber was there, a couple of commissioners, um. And Hernanda is there and Crystal was there, yeah, so, yeah, good event. Uh, books are not here, you can order them online, we're gonna work on trying to get them actually at State Hall for delivery and deployment, if you bring. You can scan your code and pay them, not us, and then you can help distribute, but they ordered a thousand books, so. Yeah, they're real, they're very nice, it's more children's style oriented, yeah, that was fun. And I believe that's all I have, any questions?
I I just had a question, not about something specifically up there, but obviously, the last council meeting was started the storm, we had the storm. City obviously lost power, uh, sort of across the board, um, you know, I was on the generator for a number of hours at, by the high school. That said, things seemed to come back pretty quickly, uh, and I was just curious if that was. They're more responsive, the fact that the grid was now bifurcated, sort of upper and lower, or. We just didn't experience as much damage, because I know Windville was out, you know, for for days and other areas, but just from a public perspective, I thought you might have more visibility into.
We, yeah, the city of Duval itself had literally about no impact, kind of trees, limbs and nothing, so our infrastructure stayed intact. I think, you know, letting the power go is probably within their fault, because they had no idea how much damage was between where power was going to. Um, and then like, you know, I think I was on the grid, that was turned back on eight thirty, and the rest of the city was on like three fifteen the next day. Uh, which was quite astounding, I talked to my little crew at Snatch, like this is worse than it's ever been, like, and. They still have people out, nine days later, twenty thousand people, which is a burden of power, and I think one of the third, but man, that was. They said it was absolutely insane, and it just skipped over us and then came down.
Yeah. And we did a lot of them cutting and.
Yeah, they're, you know, they have done a lot of line work in our region, um, which was helpful, yeah, we were slacking, and I I expected honestly, we were going to. Based on how bad everything else was, knowing that they were already deployed, usually, and, you know, they're not going to. They're, they're deep in Burden and Renton, like, we're never gonna see those guys. No, it was, it was loud.
We got, um, you know, some damage, rent and Maple Valley, others, especially Iskwa. Um, you know, per plane, red news, just a week, even a week after, still major, major issues, so. Um, once they have power, they have all the debris, and now you've got all the construction and demolition from the houses that were destroyed or damaged. Um, so they've got significant recovery, um, the governor did issue um. Uh, declaration of emergency, as did the King County Executive, so anything that we did. Even though we didn't have a lot of damage, tracking that and making sure it gets turned in to um contribute to the state. Um, the state amount, which will hopefully, especially for those harder-hit cities, bring some federal dollars back home to help cover their costs. Um, and hopefully send individual assistance with any luck, but it's, and they're still assessing damage, it was much more extreme. Than um than you would guess just by direct main roads.
Yeah, look at it all trapped and turned in on the six to half, we were on a ten thousand dollars based on overtime. Fuel and whatnot for your facilities and generators and stuff, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, Councilmember Nethlin and then Shaper.
Um, putting up that photo reminded me of, uh, I think it's Rosenbott Corner, I think it is, that we were gonna do some replanting and. Is that still happening?
We're waiting for washout, they're coming through after the next uh winter to do their realignment of the channel.
Oh.
So they're realigning the stream under two oh three, not under one forty-third, and then up into one forty-third. So they're reworking on that, they have permanent room with us on that construction.
So then they will have to restore it.
So disemoderation, restoration and then fill in the gaps. And I think where we're talking, I know there's argo discussions, but maybe some. Small banner locations, like we had on the north end, the smaller banners, that's the ones that we have, too small. small banner locations, like we had on the north end, the smaller banners, not the ones that we have, too small. That might be a place we can incorporate some small banners. There's not a lot of space along two or three, you know, south of Big Rock. So that might be a place to put some, but that was an opportunity discussion we decided that might be a place to help kind of entice that according to be. Have you done?
Yeah, thanks.
And Councilmember Shaker?
Yeah, back, back in storm. Now, I I just wanted to acknowledge uh how well our own Public Works uh responded to the storm. The fact that, you know, most people, we take, we take it for granted, right? We turn our boss on, still have water. We flushed our toilets, we're still able to 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 flush. Those services remained intact largely to the excellent uh preparation that our own Public Works part. I know your backup generators had to be, had to be on uh at the, at that point, and like I say, we take it for granted, but uh preparation counts, and you guys did a great job.
Yeah, well, is it a lot of favors to prepare? You know what? We do a lot of these staff, and they are all learning to, you know, the burn rate of fuel at this at the treatment plant, right? That's an unknown in a sense, because it is always variable. Basically, how much flow is coming in? We were super lucky. We could have went for day, you know, as opposed to some of the, the building heavy rain. We have a lot of I I and we were just processing it in normal rate, right? Almost the summer rate. So, you know, we burned two hundred and fifty gallons of fuel. That was it. Uh our building is off that now too. Their project won't feed system. Um you know, Joe, the crew of the generators ready to go for a state hall to be turned on and, you know, warmups. People come to work the the morning of and the shop itself, they have to get that ready to go in the morning of, and I just, I know they were prepared. And it's great you have that ability for a staff member to watch, you know, not only communicate with the E C C and the county emergency manager, but you can then have that person deliver information to the rest of the staff, so they were all, you know, Luke was shuffling information constantly, and it was very helpful for everybody to be ready to go and you got, you know, your deploy, like who's coming first? If it goes south, who's coming in next? The the treatment plant guys weren't on twenty four seven because it did lose power. Um and then the babysits and new equipment, they're they're not familiar with how it's going to react. Uh and everything did great. It was worse with the power flickering while we were here than it was when it was on. And we have honestly Seth and I have talked about if it's that bad and it's imminent and it's flickering, we we probably might just kill it on our own.
Yep.
Cause it's so bad for the equipment to be flickering on and on in like a brownout situation.
One thing that we had put down to that did impact us over the last twenty four hours, we had a Verizon outage, so none of our city cell phone worked. So it also impacted our SCADA.
Yeah, last two days, we were out with Verizon.
Councilmember Nethlin, yeah, so if you're asking, um, do we use natural gas at all for our generators? Or do we have a backup system? Cause just.
No, uh natural gas, uh fuel is a police station, and I think two out of the three lift stations and the rest are diesel.
Oh, is that something we've ever considered?
Yeah, I almost contemplated, but normally emergency management practices don't recommend natural gases when the S is the fan and earthquake, gas is done.
Oh, it already goes, okay.
So at least we have contained systems of diesel.
I see.
And you can do some dual fuels, which we have contemplated. Um but you know, the diesel in our buildings runs for quite a bit of time, and the prior, the providers were very yeah, we'll be there. Like, we were lucky. We have good relationships and I know it's always nice to get everything on state and and make sure we're doing our best to keep our costs low, but once they are on our contract and then know us and they're like, yeah, we'll be back tomorrow. And the guy came in on his own, like, hey, I've had this so long, you need me to stop that? And you guys talk, but they were super helpful. So yeah.
Thank you, Director Lenishewski. Okay, and then the next part of the report.
Uh December fifth is implementation, uh oh, I did not spell it correctly, I apologize, initiative uh two six six, which is the natural gas policy measure. Uh it's not going well as of today. Um we were hoping to get some emergency rulemaking by the Building Code Council for our energy codes, but that hasn't happened yet. We're hoping there's two more days. They've had two meetings, one a couple weeks ago and one as of today. Um so stay tuned, we have, uh I have a meeting with our city attorney, cause we do need some legal direction on what to do on December fifth, when we have to turn that initiative live. And right now cities are kind of all over the place on it, so stay tuned. Um permits inspections for November. We did not issue as many permits this month as we normally would. Um twenty nine non residential and three residential, but we did have a lot of inspections for November, so about two hundred and eighty one. We still have about thirty permits for pickup and at least another forty um that are under review, or we're waiting back for something from developer. Um we've already scheduled our transportation plan open house, so mark your calendars. We'll put something on everybody's calendar for January twenty ninth. That is a fourth Wednesday, so there hopefully are no conflicts. We're also gearing up for two public hearings on January eighth and twenty first, the twenty first of the council hearing for the capital facilities plan, so we've got that pretty much wrapped up and are ready to go. Um our housing element and land use map were submitted to county a couple weeks ago. We are waiting to get a meeting with the county staff, hopefully here in the next seven to ten days. And we anticipate hopefully a letter from them within probably three to five months so that we can complete our comprehensive plan. Uh we have some uh other policy work that we have to quickly do before the middle of next year. One of them is called unit lot subdivision and parking policies. So part of the mandates were legislative changes that we have to now adopt. And so uh most people are not familiar with unit lot subdivisions, so we're gonna do a policy I think you, which I've already got prepared for the next council meeting packet. Obviously, we're all familiar with parking, but the state has decided that it's going to reduce, mandate, reduce parking um opportunities for us and including the size of them, tandem, gravel, you name it, there's gonna be changes. So stay tuned, because we'll have to have a first draft to planning commission council no later than March. And so I'm personally working on those two, because we're pretty, we're pretty stressed right now with our other staff. Um I'm also working on our accessory dwelling unit. That is the third policy that has to be completed by the end of next June as well. And that one I will have ready actually in February, cause I've started working on it already. I can tell you with those three policies, all we're doing, the meeting, the minimum standards, cause that's all we're gonna have time to do. We won't have time to make anything fancy or fun. Um we are actively reviewing towns one forty three. Um they decided to take their design review and separate it out from their subdivisions, so their subdivision's under construction. So we're trying to get them preparing for their site plan review. Uh twelve phase four, we just finished completing uh the second review of our commercial daycare on one of their lots in phase four, and we also are working on a review of a short plot on one forty third. Next slide. Okay, city hall updates. Uh the exit audit was this week, and uh to to be honest, we received a very clean audit, probably the cleanest I'd always had, um and all the time I've been here, so thank you to the Department for making that happen. That's no easy, that's no easy feat. It was a lot of information. We had new, new audit staff this year, which makes it even more complicated, cause you get more questions, you're trying to lay, learn to lay the land and new staffing. Um but it was a really good process this year. We have hopefully a stargazing um event on uh December sixth, weather permitting. Looks like it's gonna rain, so I would say it might be washed out, but we'll see. Um some great news, the finance associate has been hired, and so has associate planner, they both start on December ninth. Um reminder, our workshop for twelve seventeen was canceled, but we do have um the meeting starting at five thirty instead, so we'll see everybody there. Next slide. And of course, what's this week? Line up D U L, so hopefully we'll see everybody there. Um you can go the next slide, that was fine. And then next week, we have our first ever D U L express, so we're super excited about that. Uh uh Rita is working really hard on both of those, and that's never really important to the community, so hopefully we'll see everybody there.
So thank you, Director Thomas. Um I just wanted to say to Beth and your team, as well as all of the city staff, especially the directors, um to have an absolutely squeaky clean audit without even any, you know, recommendations um other than essentially scripters notes is incredible. Um that doesn't happen very often, um cause there's always something to improve upon, and um I wanna credit finance team and Beth, as well as the staff that, um you know, she can't have a clean audit without staff going following receivers and doing things the right way either. Um so it's a huge feat, and I think it's, uh we kind of meet audits uh every year um for at least the last eight years, um that we've had audits, um you know, sometimes some recommendations. But to have this one be uh the best yet is an incredible feat, so congratulations and thank you all for uh the hard work and dedication it takes to make sure that things are in tip top shape to get that kind of um kind of review from the state. So uh your gold stars all around. Thank you. All right, um do we have any council updates this evening?
Well, I have a question on the tour.
Go ahead.
Um there were two gas, natural gas initiatives during this last election. One failed, this one, you're referencing, what was this one about?
Um I only remember one. The other one was the climate bill.
Yeah, there is some.
So this one, so essentially right now the state has a preference towards electric, electricity.
Yeah.
Based on how we receive our electricity, which is cleaner, so whether you have wind power or hydro power, those types of things. And so what happened was that in two thousand eighteen, the Building Code Council started to move in that direction of the direction essentially of the legislature, cause there was a bill that came out. And so, for example, a gas furnace receives zero energy credits because it's efficient, because of its efficiency. While a electric type furnace system, which can there's quite a few on the, on the market, get three points. And so what the initiative does is it says that that we can't now have a preference towards electric type of heat, and so we're not supposed to be using the zero points and the three points. That's what the initiative essentially says, but without really saying, by the way, it was twenty three pages. I read it a couple times this week. It's pretty confusing. There seems to be more than one item on that um initiative as well. I would surmise to guess that there will be some sort of um filing this week potentially by um the attorney general to have the courts look at and determine if it meets the one subject rule at at a minimum.
How, how in the effective building code?
Because we are, the the House bill required us to adopt a new energy code that gave preference to electric heating over gas heating.
Yeah, and it's not required, it's just, right? I mean, well, I mean, the builder's not required to. He can put electric down. I mean, gas, if he wants, but he just doesn't get the credits.
Correct, and so that is part, I think, of where the disconnect is, is I think people felt like gas was then prohibited, and it wasn't, but you, it was harder to get your energy credits for your new home or your person or remodel. So thank you for that clarification. That was a good.
So for new, for new building permit, right, part of a mathematical exercise?
Essentially, heat pumps are, have been king essentially the last couple of years.
And you're waiting, basically, in comments for clarification in terms of now how to interpret that when you get a permit, whether you can, can uh focus on one better.
Yeah, because we, yeah. Cause we all received a letter from the V I A W that came across every city store this week. And some cities are saying, we're not doing anything, we're staying with the energy code, because nobody's changed it, and others are like we're just gonna start taking in permits for gas and there's some legal risks there, and we don't wanna partake in the legal risks, and we're gonna wait and see what happens, hopefully in the next couple of days, and we'll report that.
Councilmember Nethlin, I'm gonna give credit. That's, I'm glad you asked that question. So if you had a heat pump that was electric, but had a backup of a natural gas furnace, would you still have the zero credits because you have natural gas hookup for your heating?
I don't know the answer to that.
Cause I think that's what a lot of people have done, who've switched to um heat pumps, if they still kind of have the.
Remodeled, reconstructed, or new?
I guess I'm thinking remodeled, but even with, so it's new. What happens when the power goes out?
Around a lot.
Yikes.
Till we get, get power from the furnace to me.
Oh yeah, for that too, but it takes very little electricity to run a furnace versus running a.
Yeah, there's.
Around four, yes.
We're gonna do, they're gonna be cells, which I would say are not a generator, but it's basically a battery pack that is almost in case generator size, they can last you for, I, again, people I talk to, from ten to twelve hours. And they are basically plugged in all the time, and then the power's not used, use them. Um but yeah, no, there's they're all, or is it, let's not, Peter and the Bush, they're cheap, they're putting one system in, they're not doing any renovations.
I know, and this is the personnel limit there, it's like, I, we've got a hybrid system, so it's both electric and gas, and it's based on the temperature.
Yeah.
And it runs higher gases, the colder it gets. It's an efficiency.
It does remodel you, you're not credited for many.
No, right.
Okay, we are about three minutes in, so if anybody has any council reports, do we have any council reports then? Okay, um so we'll go ahead and adjourn and start, restart at seven oh two.
Yeah.
Well, that's one thing, yeah, we had that to do, or if you were not, you'd be the front, say, the element.
All right, I'd like to call the Tuesday, December 3, Duval City Council meeting order at seven oh two PM. My clerk, would you please take the roll?
Of course.
Mayor Oberlander here. Mayor Lieutenant McHenry.
Here.
Mr. Isaacson. Mr. Schaefer.
Here.
Mr. Mercer.
Here.
Mr. Supple.
Here.
Ms. Knapplin.
Here.
Ms. Kufel.
Here.
All right, we have a forum. All right, um, on additions and corrections to the agenda, please remove the municipal financial plan, or meetings presented during the committee of the whole. Please move the discussion on donations and remaining economic development funds agenda items to the 1217 meeting. And remove written, or I'm sorry, remove mayor, city administration and council reports as those are just provided in committee of the whole. And with that, do we have a motion to approve this evening's agenda? All those in favor, Councilwoman Natlin? If I might have something off the consent, do I need that in my own or do you want to? Yes, as usual. I'd like to ask that item number four, Agenda Bill 2468. Okay. Are there any objections from council on that? Okay, seeing that, we'll go ahead and run that separately and we'll run it before Agenda Bill 24-69. All right, we have a motion to approve this evening's council agenda. I'm sorry, we have a motion, sorry, apologies. A motion in a second on the floor, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Moving on to comments of the audience, I'll read the rules into the record for the benefit of the public attending. During the designated public commentary period within city council meetings, individuals are allotted a three minute speaking duration while representatives of organizations may address the council for up to five minutes. Before presenting, kindly disclose your full name and city of residence. It is strongly advised by the city to submit verbal comments in written form to expedite subsequent correspondence. Written comments must be received by the city clerk's office by noon on the meeting day, addressed at PO Box 1200, Duval, Washington 98019, or deposited at the city hall drop box located at 15535 Main Street Northeast or by email. Please be aware that the city council, its boards and its commissions solely entertain public comments from attendees present at the meeting in person. The council does not accept handouts or printed material during public commentary sessions. Information intended for the mayor or the city council shall be directed to the city clerk, who will disseminate it following the submitter's instructions. Upon receipt, the city clerk will receive written public comments and subsequently turn it around to the city council or the relevant border commission. However, it's important to note that written comments will not be orally presented during the council or applicable border commission meetings. Any written comments received after the noon deadline for written comments will be shared with the council at the next council meeting as part of the city clerk's report. All right, and with that, we have we have one person signed up for public comment. So Darren Bennett, you'd approach the podium. Oh, I'm sorry, we forgot to do the fly slip. Thank you, thank you, Steve. We're rolling through today. With the change of agenda, my expense, you always try to be in the fly slip. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the report which it stands on, the nation, for better, good, and for its well, liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Steve. Definitely, yeah, it it happens if you have too many notes on the agenda. All right, I think you're bringing that to attention. So we do have one person listed for public comment this evening, Darren Bennett, if you could approach the podium. It looks like you're representing an organization, so we have five minutes to speak. The clerk will be tracking the time.
Thank you very much, Councilmembers and community members attending in line. My name is Darren Bennett. I live in unincorporated King County for Duval. I'm here representing Cedar Crest Mountain Bike Club again related to the trails considerations in the Duval open space. I just wanted to give council members an update. We had a meeting as the Cedar Crest Mountain Bike Team with David Fleischer from Evergreen Mountain Bike, who's the trails director. And we did that on November 20th. And basically that was to kind of level set, you know, what can Evergreen offer? And and kind of what the next steps are and how Evergreen can help work with the city in that. So that was a really good opportunity to to talk with them. One thing that David's talking about doing is a preliminary overview of the plot based off of GIS data and their topology mapping data. Something they regularly do with any site that they're gonna go out and potentially work on is they want to even know, is it possible? You know, taking into account wetlands and, you know, setbacks and all of it and the things that have to be considered. So part of that is gonna be an actual walkthrough. So we haven't scheduled that yet. It's hopefully for mid-December. But based off of the amount of work that they've been doing after the storm, we might be pushing that into January. I just wanted to make that aware and then, you know, we're gonna open it up for public to come in. If council members want us to make that available too. The the key thing about that is now we've had the opportunity to to walk based off of what they've seen with the satellite maps and with the topology to to see, does this really make sense as far as what they're envisioning? And then they can present something to council or to the mayor to kind of say, you know, this is where our vision, this is what our potential proposal is. So that's the the core of what I wanted to present. The other thing I wanted to talk about, excuse me, was, you know, obviously with the storm that we recently had, there was a lot of impact to the community. And part of that is to the trail systems that we've had. This is a really great opportunity to highlight what Evergreen and even community organizations like Washington Trail Association provide. Within hours after that initial storm, they were organizing work parties to go to Tiger Mountain, to go to Raging River, to go to Doofy. Because all of those places had to be closed down. And within two days, they had most of those areas opened, of hundreds of trees that went down. Just myself, I've been volunteering at Cherry Valley for the Markworth Forest, for the DNR Land. 12 hours of volunteer work myself, 20 different trees across the trail. And I've had three other volunteers out there helping me. So there's a community out there that's willing to support these trails and and be there for the community. So. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We don't have any other. All right, thank you. Then we'll go ahead and move on to our first agenda item, which was Agenda Bill 24-68. The Contract for City Facility Site Selection Services, which is both on a consent agenda. Director Letoshevsky and Director Thomas.
Are we talking about the ARPA funds?
No, we're talking about the Contract for City Facility Site Selection Services.
What happened over talking about?
I know.
Right.
So, yeah, the contract and all the proposal material is in the packet. Seven boards as well as scope work, scope work, key proposal and a statement of qualifications. I don't have anything else to present. I assume there's questions, so.
Is there a motion to approve?
Agenda Bill 24-68. Contract for Cities Facilities Site Selection Services.
All right, now discussion. Councilmember Natlin, do you want me to explain why I asked how to hold? It's completely up to you. Yeah. So when I was reading kind of the scope of services and capital order, how things were happening, one thing I noticed is the project goes by the ways before it has just a briefing of council. And sometimes in these projects and often, and I think it is helpful, there will be sort of a kickoff where council can, you know, have some input or have an opportunity to share before it's just kind of getting a briefing once they've already done a substantial. So I don't know, maybe more can be explained about why that route was chosen or if there would be an opportunity kind of to have. Council will be to get feedback.
Sure. So they they put this together in a way, there's a pretty heavy homework session upfront, right? They have to come out, see who we are, read the documentation we have. They have been given the NRC report already, so they understand kind of what went on, what they said, what was what was provided for that report. Community outreach will be part of their earlier phases, the council, there's a there's a briefing in like step two under site selection criteria. We're not exactly saying everything we're gonna say in there either because maybe we talked in tech session stuff, maybe we don't, but it's not necessarily spelled out in this either. It is a scope of work. What they are working on relative to the early part is assessing what we have and providing their recommendations on, you know, where things might want to go as we start to go down the next steps of looking at properties and investigating what might fit. We can certainly talk, we, it's 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 not.
Right.
Second stone. I think with Makers and Julia's guidance, we we can come at the right time. We're coming twice, not including the community outreach part, so, you know, it's. If you have something specific, you you are always more than welcome to, you know, reach out to Cynthia, you can set something up or send a tidbit of what you're thinking, but we're not married to getting down too far, but there's a lot of administrative upfront work that isn't, I won't say it's not important to talk to council, but there's a lot of work that get done.
Okay.
To get started, so they they know what's in the foot.
Okay, I mean, just to give a silly example, you know, the when we had some discussions prior about locations, you know, there was some, they went down the line of Doughty Farmstead and we were all like, no, you know.
Well.
You know what I mean? So, you know, you just wouldn't want to have someone get too far down the line of something that, you know, we were all like, no.
Yeah, and that's always tricky and be in a specific instance, we gave guidance. But again, if you want to hear out of left field things, you might miss something out of left field, you're like, we don't want to control this, that's why we hired consultants to guide. Certainly, that one smelled bad and we hope nobody smelled bad and they did it anyway. But again, we have to let them kind of do their job. So we're not gonna stung them, we're gonna help guide them and share and make sure they're prepared for the beating they're gonna take, but you know, that's their their goal too and we want to support that because we're gonna support all of that as much as we are the council and administration, so. But that said, I'll make sure we talk to Julie about when she thinks it's appropriate to, you know, best come the council and provide, but they've got to be fairly deep in what they know before they can kind of see where we could go.
Okay. And and just after that, it's super important that our consultants have the leeway to bring forward unbiased analysis and not be not receiving too much guidance beyond what was originally determined in the scope of work and what the contract outlines, because without that, without that independence and their professional work, it can erode trust with the community and thinking that there's a political bent behind behind the process. So just hoping to make sure we made that, that's all. Councilmember Schaefer and then Councilmember Kufel.
Yeah, I do think it's important for the council to have some upfront input and anything on what what this organization is going to going to be doing. The the reason being is is isn't really, you know, political. I I consider it more, you know, understanding that the, you know, community focus and what's important here in Duval, which may not be the same as other communities they they were given. Now, use my favorite example, you know, they they may be coming back with this parcel that we city owns up on Cherry Valley Road. And I think you guys have heard me talk about that often enough and and it's a no-go as far as I'm, you know, I'm concerned. And there's there's, you know, community involvement is important, but understanding the community psyche, I think, is just as important upfront, how much we value nature, how much, you know, we value being a a small community and those types of things will, I believe, assist them upfront, not not deter.
Councilmember, we talked about this earlier.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember.
Yeah, and this is sort of brief as well. I'm I'm comfortable with the sort of scope, this is fine. I think this Stephen gave it its generic enough. I think the only thing that I wanted to highlight is, and I think this reflects a little bit what you're hearing from council is there were a number of deficiencies in the ARPA report and that I think council, there's a little bit of rebound from from that. My my primary concern is just obviously to assess the suitability of property. It needs to reflect what the needs are. And and so, given some of the bias, or negative bias, that some of the deficiencies in the ARPA report just make it so that they have sufficient clarity into what that process delivered and didn't deliver. And then, you know, even properties that the city has sold as surplus, they still might be suitable. So there's, you know, lots of things within the city, just making sure that that from from a requirements, and I think that's a lot where the feedback will actually be from staff and then the council has a layer on top of that in terms of public mixed use facilities. But again, that's, I I want to reflect, I think, having the ability to sort of weigh in early enough so that there we, there's not sufficient expenditure of design that doesn't necessarily suit is is kind of what I'm I'm hearing and then just again, making sure, which I'm sure you will, provide feedback in terms of what's happened up until this point and and just in terms of adding another layer on top of the scope itself, so.
Thank you. And Director Thomas?
I was just gonna add, I, we've actually worked with makers before, it's been a while. And what I remember because I was in charge of the contract last time with makers was that they're really good with community, community engagement and engagement with our elected officials and our appointed officials. It means a lot of, I'll say, information and illustrative, which takes a little bit of time because you have to build on the information gathering, which is a little bit to what Councilmember Verser said, which is like looking at the information, looking at the needs and the deficiencies and pulling that together. And that first project, project, almost any project is really just pulling all of that information together first. But I'm really confident in the work that I've done with them previously that they, their number one core strength is communication back to not just staff, but more importantly even, you know, the appointing bodies. And they are really known also for the communication and their meetings with the public.
Thank you, Director Thomas. Council like to vote? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. We'll move on to our last item in the business, Agenda Bill 24-69, Distribution of Remaining ARPA Funds, a discussion of each subject. Director Lake Nowitzki, our city minister, now is on here, so we'll have Director Thomas and Director Letoshevsky.
So good evening, I have a, okay, we're gonna save presentation real quick. So we do have remaining ARPA funds that are uncommitted. If you remember, we last came back to council in April and had about $131,000 uncommitted ARPA dollars. We still have some uncommitted money, we're gonna talk a little bit about that. And then we also have recommendations on the projects. My next slide. So just for those that don't remember, and since we have a vote in the community, Duval was awarded about $2.2 million ARPA dollars. Of those funds, approximately $75,000 remain uncommitted due to changes in projects or timing. Under the rule, recipients must allocate the funds by the end of this year. That's why we needed to bring this item this evening and couldn't wait. In order to comply with the rule, we have found some additional, what we would call items or projects to fund. And so we're gonna talk about those right now. Next slide. So proposal number one is a new audio visual system. So proposal number one is a new audiovisual system for council chambers, as you're probably aware, the system doesn't work very well. And you can see the cords over here, sometimes it comes undone and we can't use it at all. And so our clerk, John Batero, was charged with looking at what options were. So in the documents that we gave you, unfortunately late today, we just put it together, um, was the, the four audiovisual system. As part of the April discussion, we allocated about ten thousand dollars of ARPA to this project, but the bid came in at just under twenty-five thousand dollars. We were asking for some additional money so that we can actually do that project. Next slide. Uh, the next uh, proposal is for a new notification system for subscribers, and so this would be both text and email, and we could put, um, you know, honestly, we could use it in emergency management, but also like if we have a road closure, we can send out a really quick email or text.
At community events as well, to keep people on.
Down the road, you can actually build on this software system, but right now, we're only looking at it for the purpose of um, putting out communications, and it is about a four hun- a forty-two hundred dollar ask, but I do want to just say that there is a subscription fee, and it is about four thousand dollars a year. So it's not just the one-time commitment of ARPA funds. Next item. A small banner pole set, uh, this, uh, really came from Rita and myself. Uh, we just don't have enough banner poles to put up everything that everybody wants for community events, including for city events. And so we'd like to put uh, two new banner poles. Very similar what we have at Woodville-Gable Road and Main Street. Uh, one of the areas that we can look at is by Rosenbach Corner, and then hopefully we can find a place off of Big Rock Road as well, because that's another area that we're um, miss- missing out on vehicle trips that go down that corridor every day. And that project is about forty thousand dollars, it's about two thousand dollars per set. And public works would do the majority of that work for us. Next item. So proposal four, uh, this is a uh, the police department is needed an exhaust fan in their evidence center, and um, a Sally Port electrical work and a light switch uh, work at one of the locker rooms, the female locker room. And this work totals about ninety-five hundred dollars. And then for both city hall and police, a wall-mounted water bar- bottle filler and dispenser. This came in really high, we had one bid, I actually asked a couple of times, that can't be right, that can't be right, but it was. The actual device itself is about two thousand dollars. So we're gonna go back and have, as we actually, Steve already has gone back and is asking them to come out, we will not spend that amount of money, but we had to bring it here to show it to you, so it's likely we will actually have some additional revenue left over. Um, once we, once we do figure out exactly how much that would cost, but it's not easy to do planning, so it will have a cost besides the cost of purchase.
Yeah, it takes a steward grant as well as a water service. It also would offset ongoing expenses, because we have a water bottle supply company, because it has a hot and a cold. So that's something that we are removing, once this does get implemented. We called for contractors, some showed up, some gave us ridiculous, of course, asked them to refine them, we're still trying to hunt for another fuller. But in the meantime, this is the number that is the low that we had. However, I'm just messenger of that nonsense.
Yeah.
We're working on it.
We're working on it.
And and believe me, if it passes, then that's the number, we're we're bringing out the way not to do that, so. Or not.
Our next slide, so these are all the requests in combination, so there are technically eight, and it comes up to about seventy thousand dollars, but that's with the two exceedingly high bids for the work, these, you know, for the dispensers. I did want to note, we are waiting for one other item to be completed that was part of the April work, and that is the HVAC system for city hall, we have about thirty thousand budget for that. We're gonna find out probably here in the next seven to ten days whether that comes in at budget or not. So we have a little bit of room in there, because we have about seventy-five, seventy-eight thousand dollars left. And we may have another thirty or so thousand as well. We're not likely, you know, to come back to council before the end of the year, so one of the requests um, that we're making is that council approve these eight items, and then authorize the city administrator to determine how to allocate and commit the rest of ARPA dollars, so that we don't leave any on the table and have to give them back.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Mercer.
And and you sort of got in front of my question a little bit, because um, that discretionary, I know one of the other areas that had come up regarding the police station, you know, addition to the water fillers and ice, and the evidence fans specifically around drugs and and other things, sort of as a, as a requirement, was sort of some of the deficiency in the evidence storage lockers, there was actually the secure storage in the safe, but then the others are rubber made containers or various things. I'm assuming if there was additional funds, there was a solution, sort of, so city administrator will work with staff to to identify other opportunities, because I knew there are, we left other things on sort of the floor in terms of the budget um, that has some legal, you know, potential legal exposure or other things, I assume some of those would be prioritized, they were a bit more discretionary.
I think we've handled that issue.
Okay, so.
Now, I don't know if they were built to ARPA or not, so I would, we'll check, and if they were, I think we would maybe flip it and add it in. I'm not, again, I have no idea, but I know somehow, yeah, the problem, at least how would that end?
Yes.
So there's certain, we did get certain ways on that period of innovation we had.
Okay.
Uh, so I know that they did do that.
Councilmember Napland?
Yeah, just that reminded me, it seemed like when we had that presentation from um, our police chief, that there were quite a few things, like in the, you know, just having a safe storage for weapons in the back of police cars, or having like a bathroom or something to be able to get into, um, you know, closed doors, there were quite a few things that um, he recommended that were really important, so I would I would be interested in making sure that our police officers have everything they need. Um, so that would be, for me, a higher priority than especially spending almost forty thousand dollars on a water bottle filler, um, hopefully we get that right down. Um, but the the, this is the first I've seen it, this, and so I'm trying to read it as fast as humanly possible. Um, because I think we are being asked to make a decision tonight, but on the audio vis- visual um, system, I noticed that it is um, using the team system. And I'm never used to using Zoom, and honestly, I feel like Zoom is, you know, sort of more accessible. I don't know, are we making a decision that our meetings will um, be clean, but it looks like that's what this is saying, is that they are going to set us up with audiovisual systems that will be used for these, and that is definitely a change, and so I'm just not sure if that is, if there's an option to stick with Zoom. Um, basically, when you invite the um, the community, I think most are more comfortable using Zoom and more familiar with Zoom, so anyway, I just was kind of curious about that. I'm quick for term.
It'll use Zoom, I've come from the with the vendor, it'll use Zoom.
Probably replace from the ballast system.
Yes, it'll replace the, as well as the microphone system, and hopefully we'll have better close captioning.
Do they have familiarity with working in council chamber, than um, you know, this type of situation?
Very much so, they actually came to us because they did the work for another city, for another council.
Okay, good, thanks.
Mayor Mr. Henry, and then Councilwoman Shaffer.
Thank you, um, sorry. I was excited to see the banner poles, albeit they're small ones, but I was curious, um, or did we recheck, or will we recheck at some point to see if the taller banner poles for Big Rock are just still an astronomical, unrealistic cost for us, or I was just curious, because I know there was talk about rechecking that at some point to see if costs came down, or if we could do more of the, the work ourselves to bring it down.
Uh, so, hello, Mr. Henry, um, we can quote that out, I think that will be under Cynthia's economic development funding discussion, maybe the next meeting, that was supposed to be a couple tonight, but she's not here, so I think we'll certainly ask the question again, we can always quote it, we have the package ready at any given time, so. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Can I answer, answer?
Yeah.
Any further questions on this, uh, Councilwoman Shaffer?
Uh, yeah, I I would like to see some of these kind of miscellaneous police items that that Jennifer mentioned. Attitude was even if it exceeds our ARPA funds, because then we can maybe prioritize a bit. For example, I'm not a big fan of the uh, whatever it's called, GoNow uh, app thing, especially just kind of costs for granted here uh, on ongoing. Uh, I'd like, you know, since this is ARPA, I'd really like it to be kind of one type of uh, type of expenditures. Uh, so, uh, things like, like more secure storage for uh, firearms in our police cars uh, would uh, would certainly be that type of thing, or was it the bathroom ramp, I I didn't remember. Why, whatever, I I, you know, those are the types of things I'd like to consider.
Um, so for this evening, we only have the eight items to offer, what we can do is, you have the opportunity, if you want to take off an item from there, you can, but right now, we don't have any items from the police department um, to bring forward, other than to say that you can direct us as part of the approval for the city administrator to work with the police department on items that they brought up during that, but all departments were asked for items for the remaining ARPA dollars.
So.
And then after we.
And we have to be in contract.
Got it, can we put the slide back up now?
Yeah.
Of the items.
That's one of the challenges, is we have like less than twenty-some days to be.
Gosh, gosh, okay, um.
It's not a no, we're not saying no.
Yeah, I don't see that. No, I I I understand exactly what you're saying, thank you. So that's not, is that the slide, that's not.
Follow along, I think we have to move to the agenda. On the agenda though, let's write that in front of you, Councilwoman Shaffer.
Oh, okay, good, thank you. Uh, let's see, the only one I really have issue with, again, is the uh, go, we said the, the app is the GoGo thing, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, do I make the motion, if I want to take that off, improve everything else, what what do I do?
You can make a motion, um, Director Ladaszewski, I.
Let's see, Councilwoman Shaffer, maybe if you would ask to reshuffle it from your peers, and that be the lowest priority, while also inserting some police gear above it? Think that's the easiest way to go?
That's exactly what I see, yeah, yeah.
A a motion to amend.
Yeah, and so we need a motion on the floor, um, but I would also just note that, um, especially not having a P I O anymore, um, that this commu- community communication pool is actually very inexpensive for the number of people to reach, um, and how fast it'll reach, um, people throughout the community without having to go to social media, I would say, so. Um, I would just note, just whatever council does, is fine, this isn't a huge bunch, bunch of money, but um, this has been something that the community's been asking for years.
Yeah, and I'm not, I guess I, I'm not too skeptical of use of, what I, again, what I don't like is the ongoing cost.
Everything has an ongoing cost if we're gonna communicate with the community, so that's, it's a thing I.
Yeah, I was gonna, I think just before you do, I mean, that that's sort of my, sort of two things, I think one is it was good to have the comment, sort of the uh, staff was requested for the feedback, so this is sort of their prioritization, obviously the water fountain cost is high, plumbing, but I know plumbing is a, it's a lucrative profession, it's a, at the moment. Um, the, just for me, in terms of that one, I think the investment we made in sort of emergency services sort of reflected in that, but I actually think that that is a public safety component as well, I think you mentioned, but you know, active shooter drills that would go out, I mean, it also addresses the gap in terms of some of the reallocation of resources around community events, so it sort of is a three for, you get a uh, uh, community uh, component, you get sort of um, disaster, just look at this last week in terms of three down or flooding, and then you'd also get uh, from a public safety perspective, we've been fortunate, we haven't had that uh, frequently, but um, uh, but it, I think it's also, one acknowledged that the recurrent cost is relatively small, you know, divided out per month, per percent of the same expense on the dollar. Um, but uh, I appreciate the awareness that it is a recurring, and maybe have a budget for that going forward as part of the discussion, but if you think of that, that's.
And Mayor President, I'd like to call him here.
Thanks, um, yeah, so I'll say my comment before I ask my clarifying question on the GoGov, because I like the idea that when you look at this request list, I mean, it touches a lot of areas of the city, GoGov to me is usable by every department in the city as well, and to what Councilmember Mercer was just saying, um, you know, I can foresee an alert going out about a police blockade or public works using it, hopefully a water main doesn't burst, but you know, stuff like that happens, so it's can be used as an alert to everyone in the city for almost every type of thing, or for events and other things, I mean. So I think it's a good investment, I guess my clarifying question, I understand the ongoing cost, is the forty-two hundred on this just for the first year, or I thought I read something about antennas, I just wanted to clarify, is there like a hard setup cost first, and then you start the subscription?
No, it's just the forty-two hundred dollars, and then every year, there's a subscription, so there's no like onboarding of the.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is just the first year cost then, got it.
Did they give an estimate on what the following year's cost would be?
It's similar. Uh, it's similar, it's in the same.
Right, thank you.
Alright, um, Councilmember Shaffer, do you have an additional question?
No, I think you guys convinced me. So fine, let's, but I'm okay, we just spoke for as it's.
Yeah, alright, would someone like to make a motion?
Uh, I move to approve Agenda Bill twenty-four sixty-nine.
Second.
Any further discussion? It's been moved in the second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes, and with that, unless there are objections, there is no further of that business, so we are assured that some people are meeting here.
Okay, we can be in the next meeting, a lot of the donation fund.
Okay, okay.
But if you have any thoughts on.